Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for December 16th, 2019. This will be our last meeting for 2019. It's gone very quickly this year. But hopefully, everybody's enjoying the Christmas season. So we'll start. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We have a quorum. And Mrs. Jarvis, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
With pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening and welcome. For those of you in the audience that want to follow along, we have agendas outside of the left door, around to the table. And there are also blue slips there. Anyone who wants to address the board can fill them out and give them to any one of the board members and it'll get to me. For those of you at home who are watching and want to follow along with us, you can go to our website, levonypublicschools.org, highlight over the School Board tab. Then you'll see Board meeting information. And if you left-click on that, it will open up another window and there are meeting agendas down on the left and you can follow those along. One of the things that I have always done as president, and I started off our regular meetings by reading our district climate goal. And that says, "All students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another." And we want to know, what does that look like? Well, that looks like what you see at the board table, the cabinet table. We respect each other's opinions. We value each other's opinions. We don't always agree, but when we don't, we figure a way to at least come to some resolution and we get it done. And we decide what's best and when we keep in mind the goal of students, what's best for our students, it's pretty easy to come to a resolution. And the best way that we can show the community is by our example. And we will respect anyone who comes to the board to speak. And we ask that you also respect the board as well. So we're going to get going with our first, actually, we're down to item number three. And I will note that after our first item, 3A, gift to ZFTR, from ZFTRW Automotive, we're going to take a short break. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jenkins.
Get a motion.
Do we have a? Yes, we do have a motion. Let's have the motion first.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the generous donation of $3,500 from ZFTRW Automotive to the Livonia Public Schools.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson. I'm just with the board, Superintendent Oakley. Tonight, we are grateful to have a dear friend of LPS, Mr. John Wilkerson, of ZF, formerly TRW Automotive, here with us tonight to carry on a tradition that has hit the 20-year milestone this year. John, would you please bring your plug? For the past two decades, ZF has generously supported our district's early literacy programs with an annual donation. To date, the company has given $89,500.
My gosh, that's amazing. Oh geez. Sorry about that. I'm going to repeat that last sentence that I just said. For the past two decades, ZF has generously supported our district's early literacy programs with an annual donation. To date, the company has given $89,500. Wow. That's amazing. The $3,500 donation again this year is coupled with a generous donation to the LPS Education Foundation. And we do have Foundation past president, Mrs. Diane Poliselli, on hand to offer her gratitude to ZF, to Mr. Wilkerson and to ZF as well. And we're honored that ZF has been a longtime supporter of the foundation, it being one of its, the foundation's founding partners. So that's been a very long-term relationship as well. I'd also like to mention another project that's been happening kind of under the radar for the past 20 years in our district. Employees of ZF Livonia donated more than $3,000 for their record-breaking Adopt a Family program this year to help families of Hayes Elementary School. Now, all 20 years have been with Hayes, correct?
We actually have supported some other schools as well, but with Hayes, it's been the last, I think, decade or 10.
Okay, excellent. So we do have a photo from, of all of the donated items that were collected. You stamped a photo in your lobby, I saw, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just this afternoon, Mr. Wilkerson delivered the items to the school. Did you wear a red fuzzy hat or?
(laughing).
For 13 families that they adopted, in addition to gift cards for another 20-plus families at Hayes. So wow, I, this was, I bet it was a very fun stop today and it's going to be very much appreciated by those families at this time of the year.
Yeah, it was an awesome opportunity to go over there again this year and play Santa Claus.
Yeah.
And it was a record, this year we did 13 families.
Wow. That's a lot.
There were another 25 $100 gift cards and another $600 that goes to a fund that they use throughout the year for the students. If, say, a student isn't able to pay for an eye or an ear exam or do something along the way, then that money is used to help those students throughout the year. So it's not just a holiday program.
Wow.
Excellent.
That's amazing. Oh, there's the photo.
Tell us what's in the photo, John.
So, again, we had the opportunity then, so the gifts are not typically wrapped. There's the one larger one that you can see, but we like to deliver them to the family so they know what they're giving and then they can put personal cards and things in for their children. So a lot of these then are put, but you can see the bicycle there. One of the larger gifts was also a basketball set, so, you know, so they could have a court. Yeah, it's just a tremendous amount of generosity from our employees that have been doing this for a long time. And, you know, not for any kind of recognition, they just do it out of the goodness of their heart. So, again, something that we've been proud to do and we will continue to do that throughout the years, so.
Wow. So neat. And you also wanted to offer a shout-out to Renee Kish at Hayes. She helps to coordinate.
Oh, for sure. Renee has done an amazing job and, you know, every year she comes to us and tells us some of the stories of the student families and their needs. And, you know, it really touches your heart to see what they are going through and what you can do to help them, you know, have more of a special holiday. So, you know, it's been a great opportunity and Renee's been a real friend. She comes over every year, helps get all the gifts, then we take them back into the school. And tomorrow, most of the families will pick up their gifts and have the chance to wrap them, so.
Awesome. Well, thanks again. And shifting back to the donation for our early literacy programs, the funds are designated specifically each year for early literacy materials for our youngest learners. And at this time, I'd like to invite Chief Academic Officer Teresa O'Brien to help us out. She's going to talk about, a little bit about how the funds are used each year. And she came across a special document that will be of interest to you guys, so.
Oh, great. Teresa, thank you so much.
How are you? Thank you so much. Good evening. I just wanted to take a minute and share the impact ZF has made on Livonia Public Schools and our lower elementary classrooms for the past 20 years. So in 1999, Mr. Wilkerson met with Elaine Coons and Donna McDowell to choose some projects that TRW at the time could partner with Livonia Public Schools on. Those original projects were to provide books over the summer for students at kindergarten and first grades, and they would be mailed to them over the summer at some of our at-risk schools. They also planned to have a speaker come for families to talk about developmental assets students would need to be successful. And they worked together to purchase some classroom lessons for middle school teachers on preparing students for critical thinking skills. So from 1999 until today, these funds have impacted countless of students and teachers in our district. To date, we have provided materials and training for teachers. These funds have impacted our writing instruction by purchasing Lucy Cawkins units of studies for teachers, a speaker from Lucy Cawkins Teaching College to provide professional development on a Saturday. So these funds were used to pay for the speaker. A hundred teachers came on a Saturday for the speaker that you put into place for us. We purchased Mastering Mechanics for teachers on how to infuse grammar into our writing instruction. And Writing Pathways book was one of the more recent books we've used to support our shifts to writing standards. In our reading instruction, we've purchased professional books for literacy leaders. We've purchased Fontis and Pennell Benchmark Assessments, funds for first and second grade teachers to assess and read with our students, magnetic letters. So we, all classrooms in the lower L schools got new magnetic letters. And then we add to that each year our new teachers. Words Are Way books, how to do word study with our students. Let's Talk About It, a kindergarten oral literacy program, and classroom books for students to read that are just right for their reading. So last year, we utilized the donated funds by purchasing support materials for our new literacy footprints, guided reading kits. These materials provide teachers with supplemental ways to instruct small group reading, including prompting cards, visual vocabulary, and comprehension. And so with this year's generous donation, we'll continue to assist our teachers as they support all of our students in becoming readers and writers. Our new teachers this year and our self-contained resource room teachers will get those additional support materials to help with their guided reading. So on the behalf of elementary teachers and students that they serve, I want to thank you very, very much for 20 years of your dedication to our early literacy. You've made such an impact.
Wow, thanks so much, Teresa. I mean, it's been an awesome journey, right? 20 years. And I remember back when we started the Keep Kids Reading Program, which was that summer program that Elaine Coons and Donna helped. And now, I think of the awesome people I've been able to interact with. I was on the Chamber Commerce Board with Randy Leepa for a number of years. You know, with Diane at the foundation and Stacy continuing to just do wonderful things. And, you know, you listen to that and you think, you know, it's not about just a financial donation. What can you do with something like that? And that's stewardship of money right there. It's not, wow, we've got a gift here, you know, we can do a little bit. This has grown and grown and grown over these 20 years, so. It's been an awesome opportunity for us. And I think of going into a new decade now and, wow, what can we do next, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, before we wrap it up, I have yet another certificate of appreciation that you could add to your collection. The certificate reads, "Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Appreciation, ZFTRW Automotive, for 20 years of support and commitment to Livonia Public Schools' early literacy programs, dated December 16th, 2019, and signed by Superintendent Andrea Oakwest."
Look at that, I even get an autograph.
And also, we are going to play a little LPS Santa Claus here for you. Here's a little token of our appreciation. Wear the, use the LPS swag with pride.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I guess I better hand these over before I forget about it.
Sure, I'll take those.
So, here is the $3,500 check for Livonia Public Schools and also another $1,000 for the LPS Foundation.
Awesome.
So we will continue, like I said, good Lord willing, be back again and look, like I said, what happens with the next 20 years of donations, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments? Mrs. Frank.
I just want to thank you. I just, I think in education today, it matters so much when we have partners in our community like you. So thank you so much. I think it makes a huge difference in these little kids' lives and in the families that you're partnering with in terms of providing Christmas gifts to them. I just, we can't do it alone. And it means so much to us for what we're doing here and our vision and the administration's vision when you come alongside of us. So thank you so much. It makes the world of difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. I appreciate that.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I just ponder the number of lives that are changed because of ZF and TRW's generosity. You've taught us the meaning of what it is to be a community and you've taught us the meaning of generosity and we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton.
One word that you mentioned was stewardship, which struck me because you don't hear it in a school setting used very often, or a business setting necessarily. You usually hear it in more of a faith-based setting. But that's exactly what, obviously, ZRTFW, you are good stewards of your own funds to be able to be generous to your community. And that then you've entrusted us to be good stewards of your gift for the benefit of the students. So just thank you so much because it really does bring a different connotation to that, to your gift, when you think about it in those terms. But thank you so much. Your generosity does not go unnoticed or assumed or taken for granted in any way. But our kids benefit from it in ways that go beyond what the district can provide and it's just so appreciated. Thank you, John.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Oakwest.
Thank you, President Johnson. So, John, we've, I was so happy that Mrs. O'Brien was able to share a reminder in that retrospective of what your generosity has been able to do because you provided those funds during some years where those additional professional development resources or classroom resources would not have been able to be provided. And I think you know that. And so that sustainability and that impact, because when we grow our teachers, we're able to grow our learners. And so you've not only put resources in the hands of children, but in the hands of our teachers who make that impact. So we're really grateful for that. And many thanks to your team as well for what they do for Hayes and for our other schools. Those kind of projects are not taken lightly and I know there are many needs that exist across the community. And so those dollars could go many places. And so we're fortunate that you choose to have them stay with our families. So thank you.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you said that, Mrs. Oakwest, because there were a number of people who helped coordinate and all the people then that directly adopt a family, go out and shop and, you know, so they take their time during a very busy season.
Yes.
And go out and do these things. But, you know, that comes back to you double, really, so.
Yeah.
It's really, again, a pleasure. And again, yeah, I loved Mrs. O'Brien's presentation, just to see all the different things that have happened. And I know some of these were, as you said, train-the-trainer types of materials where a lot of teachers were able to benefit from them. So, you know, it's great. And again, I hope to see you all again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to accept the generous donation from ZFTRW. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Again, thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. All right, we're going to take a short, five-minute or so break at this point and we will be back. Thank you. And we're back. We're going to move to item 3B, our LPS Points of Pride 2013 Bond Final Presentation. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Oakwest.
Thank you so much, President Johnson. Well, we are thrilled to be here this evening. Six years ago, it may have seemed like this was going to be years and years away. But we are here tonight to share with you a final close-out presentation, along with members of our bond team, to celebrate the work that has been done since the community's passage of our 2013 bond issue. And so I'm going to invite to the podium to spend time with us this evening Allison Smith, our Director of Finance, Paul Tariel, and Scott Smith from Plant Moran Cressa, and Phil Francis, our Director of Operations. So, and Steve Archibald as well. So we will be co-presenting this evening and spending some time sharing where we have been and where we are now. And so we're going to have to put a slideshow up on the screen and share a little bit about where we started. So as you, as the board well knows, we started back in 2011 and 2012 with a comprehensive facilities study that led the Board of Education at that time and our district leadership at that time to put on the ballot a bond-issue request for $195 million for the May 7th, 2013 election. And those of you who were here at that time, look at these materials and probably remember them fondly. We spent a good deal of time talking about really three important pieces. The first one was, why now? It had been almost 20 years at that time since the district had last gone out for a bond issue. And so at that time, we shared with folks that our schools were 50 to 60 years old. We were in really great need of updated technology, out learning opportunities for our students. We had really some critical infrastructure needs. And we knew that many of the needs that existed in our schools were really those underbelly, behind-the-scenes, mechanical and electrical. But there were also some exciting projects that we had on the horizon as well. So then that really led us to say, what would the benefits of the bond be? So this was a big ask of our community. And we're now seeing some pretty large bond requests from districts in our area and throughout our state. But that time, that was one of the largest bond requests that had been made, certainly in the tri-county area, but one of the largest in the state. And at that time, we talked about the benefits of the bond being focused around safety and security, enhanced educational opportunities for students, and really being able to modernize our classrooms, both in the environment and the technology available to our teachers and to our students. And we really wanted to let the community know, we were here to reinvest and reimagine our schools, our classrooms, and our district. So we went out for a $195 million bond. It was a 30-year millage. It was passed overwhelmingly by the district and it was approximately 2.0 mil request over the life of the bond. So that takes us back a little bit to where we were. And at that time, of course, we were thrilled to have the support of our community.
And as Ms. Oakwest shared, the planning for the 2013 bond came well before we went to our voters and asked for their approval. We had external consultants come out and do a thorough examination of our facilities and offer an opinion on what it would cost to bring our facilities up to date. And they identified over $250 million worth of needs across the district. That was something that was discussed with the board and felt, and the board and the administration felt that it would be best to pare that request down. We got it down to $195 million. And because of that, we had to go through those needs that were identified and prioritize what was the most important. What did we want to get done through these funds? So first and foremost was the safety and security. And we're so fortunate now to have secure vestibules at all of our buildings as well as other security enhancements such as security cameras and whatnot. Also, very proud of the fine and performing arts centers at each one of our high schools. They're just a showpiece for our community. The students love it, I know, and the community, everybody that visits them is just taking pride in what beautiful facilities we have. Also, about $123 million worth of facility improvements. I won't go into all the details because we have lots of slides that are going to show you just what was accomplished over the last six years through these bond funds. We also had new buses. We were able to purchase 66 new school buses with the bond funds, as well as maintenance equipment that was end-of-life. And our maintenance crew is just so happy to have this new equipment at their hands. And last but not least was about $7.6 million worth of furniture and instructional equipment, new classroom furniture. It started off, we didn't think we'd be able to get to all of the classroom furniture for the students and we're happy that we were able to do 100% replacement in the classroom, as well as instructional equipment, new science equipment, and a number of other core areas that we were able to go to. So this was just a snapshot of some of the priorities that we focused the 2013 bond funds on.
Thank you, Allison. And as Allison shared and as our focus you'll see throughout this, is really everything was done with the students as the first priority for these dollars entrusted to us by the community. Now, we'll invite Steve Archibald, our Assistant Superintendent, to join us, who was part of the process from the beginning, and share a little bit about that process that we utilize in the district.
So, thank you, Andrea. One of the key and important things that we did throughout the process was, is illustrated by this slide, is we put together a large number of committees. I think there's 10 represented here and it wouldn't be difficult to go back through and find a number of other committees that might not be reflected here, as well as an additional subcommittees. But it was certainly very important that we were garnering input from essentially the end-users, whether it was classroom furniture, musical instruments, and alike, that we wanted to involve those folks who were going to be touching this equipment and these spaces on a daily basis. And so it wouldn't have been unusual for us to have as many as six, eight, nine committees going on at one time, in addition to the individual building renovations. In addition to that, each building, when it was their summer for renovations, we started with a building committee with a cross-section of staff members. And they would typically get an overview from Plant Moran on the scope of the work and then provide some additional input, including some of the finishes, floor color, tire patterns. And so really be able to put their individual handprints, if you would, on the work being done in their buildings. And so that was essential to the process, so.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Paul Tariel to join us from Plant Moran Cressa. So really, from the start, as you know, Livonia Public Schools partnered with Plant Moran to really begin that process of selecting architects and project managers and folks who had worked with us throughout that, throughout the next five to six years. And they really brought their expertise to our passion and energy for this project. And really, together, we built a really, a very, very strong team that is, as you will see throughout this presentation, has resulted in some outstanding outcomes for our students and for our district.
So there's no doubt that it took a great vision by the board, great leadership by the administration, but it also took a pretty big team to implement this bond project. Up here, there's just a few names that we wanted to highlight, from our architectural and engineering friends at French and StanTech SHW, to the construction management firms at AUC and Barton Mallow and McCarthy and Smith, and really a whole bevy of other professional service firms, environmental consultants, material testing, commissioning agents, firms from all over southeastern Michigan that really came together to help implement this bond. Not to mention that we probably, I think we hired over 600 contractors throughout the 30 or 40 different projects that we had. And if you add those all up and start thinking about the number of checks that had to be written and the pay-ups that had to be reviewed and just the whole nature of the project, I think we ended up with over 1,000 or close to 1,000 POs in contracts that were written over that time. So, which obviously, we had a lot of help from Clark Hill writing those and making sure all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed, and a lot of help from your accounting staff to make sure the checks got caught on time because really if the money stops flowing, people stop working. So trying to keep everything humming along was no small task, for sure, so.
So now we're going to spend a little bit of time. I'd like to invite our Director of Operations, Mr. Francis, and Mr. Smith from Plant Moran Cressa to really take us back through. We did these presentations in detail, as you might recall, every fall. We came back and Mrs. Jenkins led us through just a wonderful review of what had been done that summer. What we're going to do is, in a very short period of time, remind you of that work over the past five or six years. And we'll invite Phil and Scott to get us started.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. So we're going to go through each summer and each of the phases. So up here on the screen now is Phase 1 bond work, which was back in the summer of 2014. Cleveland, Coolidge, Rosedale, Cooper Upper Elementary, and Frost Middle School were all part of Phase 1. And generally speaking, as you know, we had quite a bit of standardization across buildings. So in general, there was certain scope of work that was going to be done in all of our buildings. And just if I can pause for a moment to say that the standardization of some of that work is really a great value for the district moving forward from a maintenance standpoint. When you're running with multiple ventilation units or, you know, different surveillance camera models or whatever the case may be, it's more difficult to maintain and keep track of it as you move along. The standardization of the vertical unit ventilators and items like that will be very helpful and actually a value-add to the district as you move forward to maintain these types of items. Now, having said that... Now, having said that, we're not going to go on with, with all the plethora of items that were done in the bond to every building, but what we do want to say is with that standardization didn't mean that we ignored buildings' unique needs. So Scott and I are going to run through each of the phases. You've got some pictures up for the first couple of years showing a before and after, which can be wildly different when you see the, the facades and the fronts of the buildings. But just to point out maybe at each building, something that we found that may have been unique or needed that building that we did. So that's what we're going to, we're going to do right now. In addition to just sort of the blanket understanding of secure vestibules, security cameras, floors, ceilings, paint, furniture, whiteboards, technology, I'll get into in a future slide, et cetera. At Cleveland, one of the things that was a, a large project was, was the main office that we had to reconstruct and bring forward because if you remember Cleveland before the renovation, you walked into the main doors, there's a very large lobby and you had to keep walking forward and then turn into the main office. And we had to bring that forward to be part of a secure vestibule and that had just bumped up the office and we were able to build an office behind where it used to be, which was where like the EST is now, et cetera. So it was a very important project to get them their secure vestibule and kind of rejigger the front of their building. Coolidge, their gym cafeteria had extensive work done to it to expose the ceiling and to put in some glass block to get light into the gymnasium, whereas before it was, it was blocked off from, from any of the daylight. And at Rosedale, we had a really a great transformation in the kindergarten rooms as well as their gym cafeteria as well. A really, really dynamite section of the building. And at Cooper, we updated the main office workroom area where, where the teachers have their mailboxes, a copier, and some places to work. And, and that's was sort of done in a way that it was more accessible and easier to utilize for, for staff. And we're going to move on to Phase 2.
Yeah. Thank you, Phil. So that was summer of 2014, year one. Year two, summer of 2015, actually was the first year I entered the district, so that was the start of Scott being part of the process. But similar to last year, we did three elementary schools, an upper elementary, a middle school, and then we started our first high school, which was Franklin High School. And you'll see our, our high schools, as a reminder, were done kind of over two summers. And then the performing arts centers generally continued throughout the school year. But at the elementary level, Hays, you'll see there, probably the, the thing that stood out most to us was just the transformation of the, we call it the fascia system, but it's that banding that goes across just below the roof line. And it was, Mr. Wilkinson probably recalls it, but we covered that up and went with an, you know, a more current pattern there that, well, lack of a pattern, I suppose. So that, that's probably the most prominent thing that, that stood out at Hays. Kennedy, and you'll see in next year with Hoover, Kennedy's big thing was really the office transformation and moving that around and reconfiguring it and giving it a real presence from the front vestibule. As you can see from all of these photos, they all have the entry vestibule with the archway and the school name above it. Roosevelt, one of the big things there was relocating the ASD program into that building and into the back half of the building. About a half dozen rooms were impacted up there. We also improved the lobby aesthetic in that building. That was kind of an, an older building in the district, a 1950s level building. So it had some older traits that maybe some of the other ones didn't. Riley, I think one of the big things at Riley was really the curb appeal. At most buildings, we replaced the windows, but these used to go floor to ceiling. And so now as you look through that, probably that first three and a half, four feet is now masonry, split-faced decorative-looking block. And then we've kind of shrunk the window, which still gives you the vision out, but also is a little bit more thermally efficient for the building. And we also worked on Emerson and, and this really, again, we relocated the office to the front of the building and also did a new roof there on the front entry as well. And with relative to Franklin, again, we, we kind of get kicked off. Did a lot of work in the, with the new PAC, but that also means we had to transform the old auditoriums and what, what could you do with that space? And at Franklin, part of that was a large community room that's used by lots of different departments. And then probably my favorite thing, particularly around Thanksgiving, is the Patriot Inn remodel. Really transformed that space quite a bit and that's, that's quite a neat space now. Jumping forward one year into 2016, similar pattern, so we renovated three more elementary schools. Grant, Hoover, Randolph, and then Johnson Homes Middle School. Wrapped up Franklin and then began the start of Stevenson High School. Grant, what really stands out to me, there used to be some old teal tile that was evident on the front of the building and then you could also see it from various viewpoints as it was in some of the courtyards there. And we covered that up with a darker tile. So it really got rid of that and I, I think for me, that was one of the most notable things that highlighted that building relative to all the other work that we did, you know, building by building. Hoover was really a sister school to Kennedy, so a lot of the, the same thing with the office area. Those were the big improvements there. Randolph, again, probably, if you recall, that, that building used to enter in through the can, there was a big canopy there that still remains. But we, we moved the office from the back of the building, which was small, to the front of the building, which was much larger. And in doing so, we converted the front entrance just off to the, to the right of the main entry now. And also did something with the fascia panels there and painting them. Those were a, kind of a copper reddish color in, in the past. So made some definite improvements there to the front. Johnson, probably the biggest thing there for me was the cafeteria area. Also new lockers. They have a large lobby just off to the left of the, of the main area, so we made some visual improvements to that portion of the building. Holmes, very similar to, to Johnson, had a really nice cafeteria finishes. Again, more lockers. Trying to remember the, yes, the, thank you, Phil. The, the music room was a, was a big transformation there. That was a couple of smaller rooms, they were separated by some walls that were, you know, just, just the rooms weren't laid out properly. We knocked those down, created a much larger space for the music department. They have windows that now have light, light let into the room. I think it's a really nice space. And then again, we, we finished Franklin, so that, that really would be the, where we finished up the Performing Arts Center. The Performing Arts Center was wrapped up in that second summer. And then we, we kicked off Stevenson. And again, that, that involved kind of relocating out the old auto, auto department and physically demoing a portion of that building to make way for the new Performing Arts Center off to the west side of the building there.
So Phase 4 was the summer of 2017 where we finished off the Stevenson High School project, which their PAC, and you see a picture there of the, of the beautiful new PAC over at Stevenson. Let's not forget that both Franklin and Stevenson, those are brand-new structures as, as Mr. Smith had, had mentioned, that were built and attached to the, to the buildings. We began Churchill High School. Their Performing Arts Center was not a rebuild or a new build, it was completely gutted and remodeled because it is actually located in a central portion of the building. There is quite extensive work done to it and it looks nothing today like it did when, you know, before the renovation. It's, it's literally unrecognizable, except that there's a stage and a curtain. But otherwise, it was brought up, we brought in quite a bit of fill and raised the, the floor level. The, we've had new steel put into the roof. There was just a massive overhaul of the Churchill PAC that began in the first year and it took both, both years to accomplish. And we also did extensive work to C-Hall at, at Churchill in the first summer and their main office. One of the things that stands out to me for, for Churchill is that main office. The high school has generally had three separate areas for their offices with the, you know, the principal and, and attendance and a business and a, why am I blanking on the third one suddenly?
Scheduling.
What's that?
Scheduling.
Scheduling, thank you. Scheduling office. Churchill brought all, all three of those along with the principal into the central area at the front of the building and completely remodeled that, that, that section. And it came out as a unique item from, from the other high schools. We also did Garfield and renamed it the Garfield Community School. We brought in GSRP and moved the Western Wayne Skill Center Program, which is our 18 to 26-year-old MOKEI program, from Ford Skill into Garfield. And having done that, we had a focus on not just doing our standard items of floor, ceilings, lights, et cetera, but we had asked, you know, what, what does an adult learner need? And one of the items was that we built a student lounge. We took the old LMC and repurposed it into a student lounge where they can hang out and have their lunch or, you know, sit back and, and talk or, or do some work, much more of the feel of a community college or, or an adult feel to the, the young adult student learner. It was, and GSRP was also put into a wing with six rooms, I believe we did for GSRP, and the program was moved in as well. So it really has that community feel of both, you know, pre-K and also post, post-high school education at Garfield. And the summer of 18 with our Phase 5 work, we had the, Livonia Career Technical Center, Webster Elementary, we had Buchanan Elementary School, Jackson Early Childhood Center, and the finishing of Churchill High School, which we had already discussed, the Performing Arts Center and the rest of the classrooms were done in the other halls. One thing I want to mention is at this point, once we got into the, the Garfield project and the Churchill project, I failed to mention, things had changed enough in the construction world and in lighting and energy in that it was now affordable and reasonable to turn to LED lighting. So Garfield and Churchill became the first schools that became fully LED lighting, which is a huge energy savings for the district and a sooner buyback on that product. Even though it costs more than traditional fluorescent, that, that gap had lowered enough to make sense for the energy efficiency and the savings in our, in our electric bills. At the LCTC, we have the large group room that many of you are familiar with and we've had board meeting in, in that room and different, different conferences, et cetera, in there. And it really was an attempt to make it, keep the professional feel of it. On the exterior, that used to be a, a roll-up garage-style door, even though it was drywalled on the inside of the room, when you pulled up to the Career Center building, there was still this roll-up door. We had that removed and bricked it up, cleared up that area and built the, where it used to be a, a, a lower drive that used to go into that area. We raised it up with a curb. We also cut in a window for it to bring some natural light in, into the space. At Webster, we created a gross motor room for the students in the MOKEI program and also did something similar as the Coolidge Gymnasium, we're having glass block to bring some light in and doing some additional updates and upgrades into the gymnasium area. Buchanan was more recently renovated and, and so when we went in to this, the summer of 18, one of the, the big projects we needed to do is to get that secure vestibule, which was a challenge without completely going in and demoing out the main office. So the challenge was to create a secure vestibule in a manner that secured the building without adding extra unneeded scope and destroying the main office, which was accomplished. And it actually is a very nice setup and for those of you who have been there, the way it's been blocked off because they also have a gymnasium direction to the right, so we had to close up that area. Jackson is obviously a former elementary school, but now is our early childhood center and they have, again, unique needs based on having the, the childcare as well as the ECP programs. We worked with the, the administration and the staff in the building to reconfigure the front of that building for their unique needs and the extent of the people that are coming and going in a building like an early childhood center. So a very successful project for us that year. And finally, in the summer of, of 19, we did have, the pictures you have in front of you here are, are Performing Arts Centers. I'll back up for a second. You can see just some of the different shots inside and out of, of Churchill, Stevenson and Franklin's Performing Arts Centers. And I don't want to, to forget the summer of 2019 where we did add in Nishihiro and were able to do the renovations. We don't have any, any pictures for you, I apologize for that. But we did just finish this past summer, Nishihiro Elementary, which is our dual imagine, immersion Japanese program. And we really had some dramatic differences and we took the board in there in the very late summer, early, early fall to see the differences and the changes with regard to, to the spaces. So I'm very excited at that point.
Thank you. So now we'll invite Mr. Archibald back up to talk a little bit beyond the school renovations, some other things that we were able to accomplish with the bond.
So in addition to what Mr. Francis and Mr. Smith were talking about with respect to the, the classrooms and the buildings themselves, we were able to make some, some other purchases that have been rather exciting and enjoyable. First in the, in the center, you see our, our signature entryway with the arch. Each of it dresses up the entrance to each of our buildings with, again, the arch, the benches, the lighted bollards, and the nice stamped concrete. So again, dresses up that entryway. Our bus fleet, Mr. Martin and the mechanics and, and maintenance did a tremendous job maintaining our, our older fleet and keeping those buses serviceable and on the road. But certainly these were welcome additions to us as we transport thousands of students, thousands of miles a day. So that's been a wonderful addition. The lower left corner, what screams fun more than that playscape in our elementary schools? And, and those are certainly very well received and are, are well-used when the, when the weather permits. The furniture in the upper left-hand corner, that's just one example of the flexible furniture. You'd be surprised, or you may not be surprised, from the research we did on the furniture, no one recommended that you go with a stiff, one-piece desk and chair combination. It was all about flexibility, both in, in being able to move the individual pieces around at different configurations, but then the individual pieces themselves have flexibility to allow individuals to move and how important that was even to minimizing discipline or behavior issues and helping students maintain their focus. And so there was, there was a lot to be learned about furniture beyond just the furniture itself. And then in the, the lower picture and, and the far right, each building was provided with funds to equip a common area or a large group area within their buildings. And so what you see there is, again, areas that probably look like nothing like anywhere where we may have gone to school, but where we worked to make our learning environments very welcoming and very inviting to our students, far more comfortable than what they had experienced prior to the renovations. And certainly areas where our students are excited to be, want to be, and look forward to getting back to. So, thank you.
So now we want to spend a little bit of time talking about what happened inside those classrooms. We're going to talk a little bit more about those renovations and then the impact it's had on student learning and teacher instruction.
Mr. Archibald couldn't have had a, a more perfect segue into this section when he started talking about flexible furniture and, and the comfort, et cetera. You have a list in front of you. I don't want to just read each one of these lines off. We're, we're listing here different things like the heating and ventilation, lighting and occupancy sensors, sinks and fountains, you know, the, the, the science equipment, the music instruments, the art room equipment, et cetera. All of these were items that were done in a standardized method across all the buildings. But the real meat of this and the real importance of all of this that we're talking about is as Mr. Archibald mentioned, the, the impact on students. So when you have a building with new updated HVAC systems and systems controls, you have an appropriate temperature, you have water bowl fill, fillers in every school, in multiple ones in larger schools. You have the bubblers in, in the classrooms in our elementary schools. You have furniture that, as, as Steve mentioned, isn't the, the old hard stiff, too small, one-piece of the secondary schools, which that's like the one thing the secondary students hated the most was the, the chair that, you know, half of the, the kids don't fit in because they're not little kids. Having furniture that is both flexible, comfortable, appropriate, stand-up desks, hokey stools, the horseshoe tables for elementarys, et cetera. Having all of these items with flexibility, with comfort, with carbon dioxide sensors in classrooms in the HVAC system that draws in when the CO2 gets to a certain level, which is a high point, draws in fresh air from the outside, making sure we're constantly flowing fresh air in the classrooms. The, when, I don't have to tell all of you, but I'm going to say it anyway, that when, when physical needs are not met, it's more difficult to learn. So when we're, when we're meeting and satisfying the physical needs of students as well as the staff, more learning is possible to occur. We have the, the, the science equipment, new advanced science equipment that I remember when it came in over that summer, one of the very first professional developments at the end of August was bringing the science teachers in and, and teaching them how to use them so they can in turn work with the students. so they can in turn work with the students. We had the music instruments, which the music department was very involved with. We did quite a bit of work with music lockers and instruments. And with that, the furniture, that is the appropriate seat, the appropriate music stands, et cetera. So in sum, and again, I said I wasn't going to list, and I started listing a lot of things, didn't I? But the idea being, the impact on the students and learning and availability. I'll just tell you a very quick story. A teacher that I've known for a long time, because as you know, I used to teach at Churchill quite a while ago, she sent me an email, as the weather in the fall started to turn cool, I got an email from her and she said, "Phil, for the first time in the history of me working in this building, I don't have to bring my little heater and hide it under my desk. I am so happy, this is my favorite thing about the renovation." So if she was saying, "It feels better in here," what are the students also sensing? It's just those items that we wanted to work hard and say, "Yes, this is all beautiful, and this is all remodeled and updated and looks great, but it's the impact on environment that was really the key." The next piece is just some information about our IT updates and upgrades. We dedicated quite a bit to IT in the bond. It was one of the cornerstones of the original 2013 bond. And as you can see, much of it went into classrooms. We had the mobile devices which go into classrooms. We landed on after a pilot and having multiple items used out at different buildings. We landed on Chromebooks, we had Chromebook carts, we have the interactive projector system. So you have the whiteboard at the front of every room and a short throw interactive projector. So when you touch the whiteboard, it becomes a smart projector, if you will. And you can tie that in, both teachers and students can use those. We've got some dynamite pictures in these next few slides of students working with some of our items in our classrooms. We have the audio system so that, as just a simple method or measure, where a teacher can wear the microphone around his or her neck, it amplifies the sound in the classroom. So it's a richer sound and it's more evenly distributed. Document cameras, we also have like desktop computers that went out to staff. We put desktop computers in the labs in the buildings. The audio enhancement sound system I mentioned also is tied to the PA, which is not the PA that we all went to school having. It's a digital, on-the-network, high-tech PA system, public address system, Wi-Fi. This bond was our first opportunity to have Wi-Fi in our buildings, in any of our buildings. As recently as 2013, we did not have Wi-Fi in any of our buildings, which, you know, was just a difference-maker for everybody involved. It was one of the very first items the 2013 bond got for us, we immediately put it in. The surveillance security cameras, the door swipes are part of that, the servers. There's the digital signage that went recently into the lobbies of our schools. There's a shot of the Roosevelt Lobby, and if you look up in the upper-left corner, you'll see that item. I think that was in Mr. Archibald's slide earlier. So the IT, and there's so much IT actually that's going into the behind-the-scenes networking that we don't touch, feel, but we're using, because none of it would work. All the fun machines aren't going to work if that network isn't working appropriately.
Thank you. So really, from the technology upgrades and the classroom upgrades, we just wanted to spend a few more minutes talking about what has this done for student engagement, for collaboration, for opportunities for students to access materials. And so if you think about that picture of the classroom, when Mr. Francis first talked and you saw the green chalkboard, and that was a real picture of our classroom, we didn't pull that off the web. And so when you think about our classrooms now with the whiteboards and the interactive projectors and the mobile devices in the classroom and the Wi-Fi, the document cameras opposed to the old projectors on a cart, just the transformation of the accessibility to information, the ability to take learning anywhere. So computer-based learning isn't simply going down to a lab. It's using mobile devices or the teacher bringing that alive for the students with the interactive projector. So learning can be anywhere, anytime, as can assessment. So now assessment can take place if everyone wants to assess in the morning, they can do so. They don't have to wait until a lab is available to share one or two labs per school for students to take assessments. So from little things to big things, the ability for students to be a part of their learning and sharing the pen and sharing the teaching with the teacher in the classroom, and being able to collaborate with other students, as you see happening here with the Chromebooks, and students really taking over some of that teaching as well as learning. And then we just, taking a look at some of the enhanced software we're able to use because we have the mobile devices. So we've shared with you Snap and Read in the Translate material. So we have the ability now to take text available to students and have it leveled for their individual needs or in their language, have it read aloud to them. And so all of those opportunities are now available to our students because of this bond. We have, again, talked a little bit about that, anywhere, anytime learning, being able to branch into the STEM opportunities for our students, as you see one of our young ones here. Really, so the bottom line is, what we were looking for were engaged students in enhanced learning. And they truly were at the heart from whether it was the furniture committee or purchasing materials for the classroom, or even the design of the classroom. It really always started with what do our learners need? And then what do our teachers need to be able to provide for those learners? And so when we take a look at the renovated classrooms, the new technology, the teacher's ability to have a more innovative instructional delivery, all of that has combined to having really reimagined and redesigned spaces for our learners that are dramatically different than they were six years ago.
Next up, not as exciting as the pictures, but to the math folks out there, the graphs are fun. So this is just a different way to look at how the bond dollars are spent over the life of the bond over the last six years. So the straight horizontal line in the middle is a representation. If we had just taken the total dollars and allocated them evenly over the last six years, we would have spent $33.7 million per year. But what we tried to do is move up some of our project timelines, because as you know, we've seen some cost escalations throughout the past six years. So we started off the first year just under that $33 million, spending about $27 million. And then we ramped it up, the next year spending $40.1, the next year $51.5 million. And then bringing that back down, in 2017, $34 million, 2018, $31.2 million, I'm sorry, $31.7 million. And then in the 1920 school year so far, about $17.8 million. So just a different way to see, again, trying to be wise stewards of the resources and knowing that we have cost escalation, trying to get more of the work done early on in the bond. Another way, we couldn't have timed the sale of our bonds any better. We were able to have some favorable bond sales and also recognize some historically low interest rates. Also, our total millage rate for debt, we've been able to lower over the last six years. Back in 2013, we were loving 4.54 mils to repay debt, and for 2019, that was at 4.1 mils. So one thing we did want to mention, just again, being transparent, on the next slide, we're going to talk about some additional scope. And we do want to acknowledge that after the passage of the 2013 bond, we did have a facility assessment done. And during that process, we did close two of the elementary schools that were originally allotted some bond funds, and we have relocated programs. So we do want to acknowledge that part of the additional scope that has been made possible will be for the reasons that Paul is going to cover next on this slide, but also acknowledge that we did have some shifts in our priorities and we adjusted our plans accordingly.
So below is just kind of a list of, kind of some of the highlights of ways that the team was able to save some dollars and provide some value for the program. Earned interest is a big one, as you look at how we were able to spend the money the way that we did and reinvest the money that had been sold, as we sold the two different series of bonds. And with interest rates in the market being a little bit better than we had originally projected, we were able to save about a million five, or actually, I'm sorry, earn about a million five in additional earned interest above what was projected in the original bond app. For AE and CM selection, that was something that we competitively bid. And we actually competitively bid out through an RFP process, all the different professional service firms. If you look at what the normal market would be for those services compared to the pricing that we got, we think we saved about $3 million on the AE and CM and at least another half a million on the other professional service firms. A lot of that comes with having a plan in place so that when we went out to the market and said, "We want to hire an architect," we could tell them exactly what we wanted them to do and when we wanted them to do it. If you go out and say, "Well, we have $195 million, we've got six or seven years, we're not really sure," that gets priced in when they put their proposal together, because they know that you're going to take a lot of their time and you're going to go in circles and not move forward while you're trying to think things through. But in this case, we had a very good plan about how we wanted to implement, and so we were able to get that pricing to reflect it. Prepricing is something that we talked about a lot. 2013, it seems like a long time ago, and it was. It was also a completely different economic climate coming out of the Great Recession to where we are now. So we were able to go out and say, "We want to hire one manufacturer to create all the vertical unit ventilators for us, lock them in for five to six years where we could lock that pricing in." Same thing with temperature controls across the entire district, as Mr. Francis mentioned, having that control system where literally from the click of a button, you can change the temperature in any room in the district if there's an issue. And then same thing with fire alarm, we have a consistent fire alarm system across the district. So being able to go out and use our volume and leverage that pricing down and then lock it in at our discretion over five or six years really helped us save money and it helped us drive consistency. So escalation avoidance, if you went back a slide, really that triangle that Allison pointed out, above the line, it doesn't seem like much, and maybe this graphic is a little bit squished, but being able to spend two-thirds of the money in the first three years really allowed us to buy things when prices were more competitive. So if you think about the very first summer, we came in, I believe, about $4 million under budget, compared to what those same dollars bought at the end of the bond, we lost about 30 or 35% of our buying power just over that six-year period of time. So buying, being able to buy two-thirds of the equipment and construction, the first half, and then a third, the second half, allowed us to save about, or avoid about $3.5 million worth of cost escalation. So value engineering and design oversight, this is something that's really an iterative process. But if you think about the Performing Arts Centers, those came in significantly over budget. We worked very hard with the architects and CMs, the whole team did, really to drive those costs back down to something more reasonable. And every project is essentially the same kind of cycle where we've got our original budget, we start to design and realize there's way more scope than we want to do, and we have to bring it back down through estimating with the CMs and helping the architects reimagine some spaces and things, and then going through that loop two or three times to get to a final set of drawings that we can bid out. So there was quite a bit of savings there as well. Managing contingency dollars, you know, one thing I thought was great was the way that we handled contingency money, and the board had us do that, which was essentially earmark contingency dollars for each project as the project was approved by the board. And then if, in the event that we needed to exceed those, we would come back and get approval before we did. But if you looked at the 8% to 10% contingency that we set aside for each project and you looked at how much was left at the end and how much we saved through good stewardship, it was a little over $3 million of contingency money that came back to the district because it wasn't spent. A few other things on there, competitively bidding the furniture, rather than just buying off of a consortium, we were able to drive those prices down quite a bit, which is helping us buy more furniture, which is a great thing. And then managing the IT scope and budget, we were able to take $2 million from that budget and earmark it back to construction. So these are just really a few examples, but really, truly, every dollar that was saved along the way, and there's hundreds of other instances, but every dollar went right back into being able to do more scope at each school to stretch the money as far as we could, so.
So with some of those savings that Paul just discussed, we were able to do things that we did not originally have in the scope of the bond. And I'm going to run through some examples on this list for you. Number one, I had mentioned it previously when I was up, we had a sixth phase, which was not originally in the bond, and Phase Six was Nigirero Elementary. We were able to go into that building and do the renovations at Nigirero. The, it says expanded renovations at Jackson Early Childhood Center. The amount that was in the original budget was far lower than what we were able to come back and say, "We can afford, now afford to do at Jackson." And as you all know, it really was money well-spent, the building is beautiful. Relocation of ASD program at Roosevelt, as Scott mentioned when we were up here earlier, that wing in the back of the building, the ASD program was relocated there, and we were able to do the renovations to the specifications of that program that was not originally thought of, or not part of it originally when the bond began. Programs-based renovations at Garfield Community School, I really like the idea of being able to say, you know, "Here's a unique program, what do you need?" And we were able to help them out with that renovation. 100% student furniture replacement. What that means is 100% of the student furniture that was identified as wanting to be replaced, because we did have some updated furniture in some buildings. So originally, it was going to be 75% done, based upon the budgets. The furniture committee and the teachers on that committee were working on both student furniture as well as staff furniture. And early on the bond, that group said, "You know what? Let's put the staff aside, let's do as much as we possibly can for students." So between that idea early on by our staff and their sacrifice of their own items to put it towards students, we were not only able to identify and get 100%, but we still saved the dollars in that if you go down to the bottom one, staff furniture replacement is now back on the list so we can turn around and readdress that item. The increased renovation scope at Buchanan Randolph, if you, as I mentioned before, Buchanan was recently remodeled, but we were able to do a little bit more there because he had the dollars. Same with Randolph, there was some extra scope at Randolph that we went back in with that LMC, the one side of it, because of some changes at Randolph programming, we were able to enclose one end of it for some space utilization. And in IT, this is something that I'll be bringing to you in the coming months, is the fiber replacement project. We purposely held that off towards the end. The original fiber program that we were going to do with the replacements was going to be partial. And now we had enough, realized enough savings in the bond that we can do it totality and have it be the armored fiber cabling across the district. So that would be coming to the board soon, and that's something we're very excited about because that'll be the heart of the network. The rebranding of the district with the entrances and signage, we have that everywhere, the arch and the seats, and the mechanical and electrical energy efficiency upgrades. One right off the top is, as I mentioned earlier, the ability to go to LED is an energy saver and a long-term operational savings because it uses less dollars.
One thing we wanted to touch upon was the trust. The trust that was built with the community through a lot of open forums and communication and just education on where our facilities stood. We were able to garner the trust of our community, and they passed the 2013 bond, which allowed us to do all that work. And one thing that was very important to us was to maintain that trust that they placed with us. So we tried to be abundantly, abundant with the information, coming back regularly to board meetings for quarterly reports on how the bonds were being spent, the bond dollars were being spent, and talking about future plans, what was next on the agenda through annual bond audits. Not only did the bond funds go through our normal audit review through Plant Moran, just again, so that it was abundantly clear that this was impartial, this audit, we also hired a second firm, Yo and Yo, to come in every year and audit our bond funds. And every year, they came back with a clean opinion that our financial statements were clear of any misstatement and that we were, in fact, using the bond funds that the way that they were legally intended to be spent and that the way that we put in the ballot, telling our community that we would be spending those funds. So again, it was important, the community put trust in us, and we wanted to maintain that trust. So again, did the annual bond audits, went above and beyond what was legally required for the district, came back and did quarterly dashboard reports, regularly came to the board and got board approval. board and got board approval before major projects were even begun to make sure that we were on the same page with you as far as the direction that we were going. Again, having that partnership with Plant Moran, that we were going through regular reconciliations to make sure that their accounting systems were matching our accounting systems and that truly every penny was accounted for. So I'm happy with that in mind to say that the promises we did make to the community, we were able to keep. And so we were able to do the secure, safety and security upgrades, we were able to put into place these beautiful performing arts centers, we were able to do major facility improvements across the district, we were able to buy the school buses that we said we were going to buy and the maintenance equipment that we said we were going to buy and the furniture and instructional equipment, that everything that we said we would do, we were able to do. So we thank you, thank the board and our community for their support that made all of this possible.
So our final slide, really before our final thank you is what's next? One of the things that we believe in this district, that while we are rooted in tradition, we are always, we always have one eye toward the future. We know that as Mrs. Smith shared at the very beginning, the needs of the district were great, we were able to meet many of those needs and we are tremendously proud of our renovated and redesigned schools, classroom spaces, performing arts centers throughout the district. So what's next? As you know, we have a 10-year capital plan that's continuously updated, we'll be focusing on our sinking front projects, roofing, boilers and paving replacements to start. And then we have a number of future considerations. So just, we certainly know that while we were able to cover many, many things with this bond, there are a number of things that still lie ahead, like our media centers and air conditioning district-wide, some additional science lab and other work areas, our kitchens, our high school field houses and competition gyms. So there are some big areas that we still have an eye, that we know from feedback from our community, from our staff, from our students and from all of you and our administrative team, that we have some needs ahead. We'll continue to do planning as appropriate, but for right now, really our focus for this evening is to say thank you. So thank you to each and every member of the original board who had the foresight to move us forward in this direction, the administrative team and all of the partners that partnered with us through the past six years.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. Do we have comments or questions from the board? Mr. Centers.
So I think a lot of the community doesn't know all the work that went into this. You know, all the decisions that were put in, the committees, the hours and hours and hours. In fact, a lot of people probably don't know what a bond is, but they do know that the buildings have been transformed and really the district's image has been transformed. And you know, that, I've got a lot of comments on it. I've had a lot of people tell me, "Wow, I noticed the schools look a lot different. They really look great." So what leads up to that is tremendous amount of work and I think this presentation really showed that, what a great job everyone did throughout this whole process. No staff snafus, no bridges to nowhere, like everything went really smoothly, the work was really high quality and with a project this big, that's really difficult. But the community has noticed and you know, the district's far better for it and our students are far better for it. So just congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Centers, other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton.
Likewise, there are just a number of thanks that have been mentioned, but I do feel the need to echo some of them. Thanks to our staff, number one, that did a lot of the groundwork before that bond ever got to the ballot, assessing what the needs were. And as we were saying at the time, we're not looking at chandeliers and buildings, but what are the real needs that we have in those buildings and helping us pare down, we can't have everything we want. So helping us pare down, what do we really, really need, what is the highest priority? So for a few years before that ballot, or that question ever got to the ballot, we had hundreds of our staff who were volunteering their time to work on getting down to what's the most important here that we have. Thanks to Dr. Randy Leepa, who was our superintendent at the time, and this was really his brainchild, his driving force. He, along with our cabinet members, our board members, many of our staff volunteers were all over our community for a number of months explaining to every group that would have us in, what is it that we need, why do we need it and how much is it going to cost? Those were the three questions that we kept getting everywhere, but as many of us as possible just blanketed our community and tried to make sure that everyone understood what we needed and why we needed it. Thanks again to Cressa, who have been just invaluable partners. Seven of us up here know how to be board members. Our cabinet team and our educators are phenomenal at educating our students, but none of us are building experts and you folks are. We literally could not have done what we did or nearly the scope of what we did without your guidance and your partnership through this whole process and you are so, so valuable to us. We've developed, we've worked so closely together for so long, we've developed friendships with you folks and we're just proud to work alongside you. And any district that wants to know whether or not they should have an owner's rep and whether or not specifically they should hire you folks, you can feel free to pass them all our way. We will let them know how invaluable you have been through this whole process. And bottom line, we'd like to thank our community because without our community placing the importance, I mean, everybody wants to save money, everyone wants to allocate their own personal dollars as best they can. A number of our community folks, our seniors, they're living on fixed incomes and several of those folks even said to me, "You know what? I'm watching my dollars carefully, but I know how important our schools are to our community and to our property values and to our students in our town." And those folks put the good of the community over the good of their own individual pocketbook at times. But thank you so much to our community who came out and said, "Yes, we will take a major leap and put a significant investment into our schools." And our whole community is reaping the benefit right now, but thanks to so, so many, very many people.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Mr. Centers.
Just one thing, you know, our community really likes to tout that this is a growing, in the last several years, this is a growing market for young families. And I don't think it's coincidental at all that after we made this huge investment in our schools, that now young families are choosing to invest here and send their kids to Livonia Public Schools. So you know, just that came across my mind and I wanted to really, you know, emphasize that and talk, when we're talking about how important this is to the community and how transformative it is.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton hit on it, I remember when we started on this path a number of years ago, one of the questions was, "What can we do this ourselves?" One of the smartest decisions we ever made was saying, "No, we can't. We need an owner's representative." And I think you've been invaluable to us. Some of the numbers that we saw tonight on some of the savings, I'm pretty sure we wouldn't have been able to do that on ourself, on our own. And Mrs. Burton also thanked Dr. Leepa. I remember having discussions with him after the bond was passed and the sales of the bonds, through his expertise, the savings that he made. It was literally minute by minute on pulling the trigger on those bonds. And he did just a phenomenal job of getting us started. Plant Moran, Cressa has led us through this, you've helped us with our book of standards, our 10-year sinking fund plan. You've been tremendous partners. We value that relationship and we thank you.
I just swagged the mic, but it's been a privilege and an honor and we really do appreciate the relationship as well and we look forward to continuing it with the sinking fund and any other way we can be of service, so thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, then we'll move on to what is now Item Three C, District Update from our Superintendent.
Yes.
Mrs. Oakley.
Thank you. We have some highlights for you from the past few weeks and so I think Mr. Carn is going to share, put the PowerPoint up on the screen for us. And so we've had an exciting past month and as always, we are so proud of our students and staff and anxious to share that with you. And here it comes.
Anybody do a soft shoe? This moment of silence brought to you by...
Here we go. So one of the things that I think you know is very, very important, I believe is very important and I think our board shares that as well, is it is important to share our story and to share just a glimpse behind the scenes of all the positive things that happen throughout the district. So here is a few of the highlights. Okay, you might need to click through. There we go. So we kicked off the robotics open house on December 6th. It was an exciting evening. Mrs. Bradford, I know you were there as well and Mrs. Jarvis. And what a great night, our students were able to share all of the preparations and the behind-the-scenes work taking place. They're excited to learn, I think one student described it as a second Christmas when the new game comes out, the competition that will come out in January. And so they were, we have a picture of one of our teams here and some of our mentors and then also one of the middle school fields. So as you know, we've expanded, we now have five middle school teams and two high school teams. Weird, this is not, would you manual advance please? Thank you. So they are having a terrific season, our middle school teams. We had two that advanced to the state championship this past weekend, which was remarkable. And you see Emerson Principal Mrs. Owen and Assistant Principal Mr. Casada, they are cheering on our students this past Saturday. The Frost Robo Falcon White Team won the Motivate Award and also were second runner-up for the Connect and Inspire Awards. And the Inspire Award is one of the most prestigious awards at the first robotics at the middle And as you know, beautiful music is being made throughout the district in our new performing arts centers. So last week Churchill High School had a band and orchestra concert and they invited back many alumni and how many, did they have close to 200 alumni?
120 people playing on stage.
Yes, in the final piece. So it was a great opportunity to highlight not only the current talent that we have, but for alumni to come back who did not ever have a chance to perform in the performing arts theater that had been renovated, so an exciting time for them. And with anticipation, you're wondering what's coming next. You have some highlights here from the orchestra concert at Franklin. And next you'll see last, I think it was last week, yes, on the 9th, at our Livonia Rotary Meeting, the Stevenson Symphonic Choir came and truly mesmerized us. They were, their voices were just beautiful and we had an opportunity to hear some Christmas carols and Irish folk song and some others and really you could just hear a pin drop when they were done. People were truly in awe of their performance as all of the musical performances taking place. In fact, check with your local high school and middle school, we have, I believe, seven concerts going on this week on Wednesday or Thursday, so if you'd like to get into the holiday spirit, be sure to check those calendars. And next, we were able to have a number of our students involved in the inauguration ceremony for the mayor and the new council members. So we had a Brownie Troop from Hoover who was invited to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. They also had a chance to spend a few minutes with Congresswoman Haley Stevens. We had, oh, I don't know if we have a picture of them, but I want to mention also that we had students from the Bell Canto Choir from Franklin who sang a beautiful song called "New City of Joy" immediately following the swearing-in of Mayor Maureen Brosnan. And we also had students from the Western Wayne Skill Center who were there as greeters and passing out the programs to everyone. So it was wonderful to have so many LPS students involved in that special night last week. We had a couple of great craft shows, here are some students from the Western Wayne Skill Center. They not only were greeters, but they also hosted a craft show on Friday, a great turnout for that. So the next couple of slides you'll see here were some of the great things that they shared. And then we also had the Livonia Transition Program students over at School Craft who also hosted a craft show. So a couple more pictures, those beautiful baskets and the different crafts and bake sales. And then here were the students at School Craft. And then last Friday, all three of our middle schools came together for the second of three activity nights. For the past few years, they've been doing the joint activity nights and this was their winter blast. They had a real live ice carver and smore making outside. They had, the school was truly transformed and literally every hallway was decorated by the students. So Santa made an appearance, it was a big night.
What school was it held?
It was held at Emerson this year, Emerson for the winter one, yes. And then the next number of pictures that we'll share with you are from Livonia City and Bright Parade. I know a number of us were able to be there on that Sunday afternoon, so I'm going to share with you some pictures as we flip through. We had students from the Webster Art Club, the Stevenson Hockey Players, as they have for the past few years, kicked off the parade before the color guard. We had all of our Palm Teams and all three of our high school bands as part of the parade. And we had a wonderful Livonia school bus, all decked out with some very excited folks from our Transportation Department and from families throughout the district who were on the bus and walking alongside the bus. Again, a number, one of our bands, each of our bands were there and really provided some great highlights throughout the parade. And you'll see our Palm Team and Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell, who were with both the Palm and the Hockey Teams. And some families from our, I believe Scout Troop from Hoover and the Palm Team from And we had Nigiero with some of their traditional parade floats, the Franklin Marching Band and then some members of our Cabinet and Board Team who were there, working to stay warm as well. And a couple highlights, we are into winter sports season and things have kicked off really with a bang with our bowling teams. Boy, I mean, what a great addition to our repertoire. This is year two, we've seen a ton of kids coming out for both the boys and girls bowling. And so Franklin, just this past weekend, became the JG Baker Blastoff Champions. They're in the top right-hand corner with their coach, Dan Hetzka. And in the middle, we have new coach this year, Tony Mizella, with his team from Churchill, who got first place at the Early Bird Baker Turney. And you see the enthusiastic Stevenson Team, some members of the girls and boys team there as well. This past weekend was a big weekend. Eddie Edgar hosted 10 games on Saturday. It was the MIHL KLA Showcase Turney and all three of our high schools were victorious in their games. Franklin, it was a very exciting game, they won in a shootout, three to two. Stevenson won a great victory over Trenton, who's always a formidable foe, and Churchill had a decisive victory over Gross Point. So those were the MVPs from each of the games. And a familiar face, Anna Mitchell, who was there providing those acknowledgements for each of the games throughout the day. Finally, we had Mr. Anderson share with us, students in the Health and Occupation Services classes at LCTC have really had a great start to their competition season. So similar to students that go for DECA in the business area, Business and Marketing, these are future health professionals. So we had 66 seniors participate in 19 different academic medical events. Of the 19, 18 of them qualified for state competition, which was phenomenal. We had 52 medals and many of those events were swept in first, second and third place by LPS students. So they took first place in nine... So they took first place in nine events, second place in eight events, and third place in additional eight events. So congratulations to our students from all three high schools, part of the LCTC program. And then finally, it was, it's been a special week and time together at Franklin. Their theme is "We Fit Together, Choose to Include." So they had students who were welcoming squads at, who were welcoming squads at school, welcoming and high-fiving all of the students as they entered. They had a unified team game and cheer, and really has been just an outstanding community service and FTP-coordinated project, and certainly a great message of which we are all very proud. So finally, just a reminder that LPS, a hashtag Livonia Pride is the hashtag that we use, and we know that that pride shines brightly throughout Livonia.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. Do we have any questions or comments?
I like the new technology.
Good. I'm glad you do.
Okay, that'll take us to Item 3D, Written Communications. I don't have any written communications. Which will take us to Item 3E, Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. No blue slips. Seeing none, that'll take us to Item 3F, Response to Prior Audience Communications. I do not have any. Seeing none, then that'll take us to Item 4, Our Consent Agenda. And if I get my computer up here. Hey, there we go. Okay. And I need a motion on this.
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of November 25, 2019. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of December 9, 2019. 5C, minutes of the closed session of December 9, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none. If you'd pass down your closed sessions. Thank you. So we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to Item 4. Item A is adoption of District Emergency Operation Plan. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and adopt the emergency operations plan developed in accordance with the requirements of Public Act 436 of 2018.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Frank. And is this Mr. Archibald?
Yes, it is. Thank you. A draft of the LPS Emergency Operation Plan was provided to the Board on November 4th and reviewed and discussed at length at the December 9 meeting. And in accordance with state law, the Board must adopt the Emergency Operation Plan by January 1, 2020. Following Board approval, the district will certify in MEGS that its approved plan contains at least the minimum components as specified in the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Burton?
Just to clarify, we have had emergency operations plans for many, many years. This is simply a matter of complying with the formatting and submitting of the proper form to the state to verify that we have this, and it, then that it fulfills the requirements.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Frank, to the, to adopt the District Emergency Operations Plan. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. I'm now having technical difficulties. My computer has decided to reboot.
There you go.
So we'll move to Item 4B, Approval of Additional Funds. I'm sorry, 6B. Approval for Additional Funds for Elementary Walking Paths. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the additional costs for elementary walking paths to Best Asphalt, Romulus, Michigan, for a total increased cost of $43,250.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Francis is going to help us with this.
Yes, thank you. The K-6 Elementary School walking paths was part of a planned project that we had from the 2013 bond. And back on September 23rd, 2019, the Board approved that project with a $10,000 contingency. Due to the field conditions that occurred during the project that Best Asphalt was, when they were working through them, the field conditions in different buildings, I should say not in the buildings, but on the properties, we would run into different items such as a low spot where you wouldn't want to have the, the walking path go through, or a tree or some obstacle, or just the way the path is being run. We, we would have to divert the original path. In almost all instances, if not all instances, we always, error is not the right word, but we always deferred to a bit of a larger path than original than shrinking a path for the elementary students at the playground area. So again, due to the field conditions, there was more scope that was done, more work done by Best. Therefore, the, since the Board did not approve the full amount, which would include the change order, I'm, I'm coming and asking the Board for approval in the amount of the $43,250 to pay for the change order for Best Asphalt. This was not due, just to clarify for the public, I know that I've talked to the Board about this a couple of times at our previous meetings, but this wasn't due to mistakes by the, the company nor by LPS. It simply was the field conditions that diverted us, and we always went a little bit larger rather than smaller for the students.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of additional funds for elementary walking paths. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to Item 7A, Approval for Teachers. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2019-2020 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
Is it Mrs. Frank? We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank. And Mr. Archibald, good evening.
Good evening again. These, these individuals were interviewed along with other applicants for vacancies that existed in our programs. We believe that the teachers listed are the most qualified for these positions and recommend they be approved for employment. These positions are included in the 2019-2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. And that takes us to Item 7B, Granting of Tenure Status to a Specified Teacher. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and acknowledge that tenure status has been granted to the following teacher effective on the respective date. Laura Pluff, on November 27, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mr. Archibald?
Yes, the requirements to earn tenure include years of service and satisfactory performance as reflected on multiple annual year-end evaluations. We ask that the Board acknowledge that tenure has been obtained by the teacher listed.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, to accept the tenure status of a specified teacher. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That takes us to Item 7C, Resolutions of Appreciation for Employees Who Are Retiring. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Kimberly DeSablin, Julie Gronstadt, Dorothy Holmes, Sandra Wise, and Dale Yanka.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton. And is this again, Mr. Archibald?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Tonight, we bring you the names of five individuals who will be retiring with a combined 120.2 years of experience with the district. We would like to offer them our sincere congratulations and ask the Board to adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation and recognition of their years of service to the students and community of Livonia Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Congratulations.
Absolutely. Wow, it's a lot of years.
That's a lot of years.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton, to accept the resolutions of appreciations for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. And that will take us to Item 7D, Separation Agreement. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the separation agreement between the Livonia Public Schools School District, Livonia Education Association, LEA, and Timothy Backel.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Burton. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you again. The terms of the separation agreement are, as they were outlined in the written legal opinion, reviewed previously with the Board. Administration is recommending approval of that agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Burton, to accept the separation agreement. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Now, now it takes us to Item 8, and 8A is Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy, BCBK, Executive Closed Sessions. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy BCBK, Executive Closed Sessions.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And this is a second reading. Mrs. Burton, would you like to add anything?
This is just, let me see here. Sorry. This is just to add the language that the legislature permitted in the last lame-duck session of previous December, allowing the Board of Education of any public school district in the state of Michigan to go into closed session for the purpose of either, I'm going to read it directly from the policy, "to consider security planning to address existing threats or prevent potential threats to the safety of the students and staff."
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other, and questions or comments from the Board? Other than thanking Mrs. Burton for attending the seminar where, where this was discussed and taking her time to bring it back to the Board, we appreciate that. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt and accept the second reading of Board Policy BCBK, Executive Closed Sessions. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. And that takes us to Item 8B, Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy JB, Compulsory Attendance. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy JB, Compulsory Attendance.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Frank. And Dr. Terrell?
Good evening. Thank you, President Johnson. As was shared previously with the Board of Education at our last meeting, we are recommending approval for changes to Board Policy JB. This policy has been presented to the Board at a study session, a committee of the whole, and at the last Board meeting as a first reading of our policy. I will be happy to summarize the changes for this one for our second reading. New language for JB, compulsory attendance, was added to include current law and practices for attendance for children becoming six years of age before September 1st, as well as exceptions to the attendance policy under IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. We recommend approval of the stated changes to Board Policy JB.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Frank, to adopt Board Policy JB, compulsory attendance. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to Item 8C, Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy JBA, Placement of Students Enrolling into Livonia Public Schools. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy JBA, Placement of Students Enrolling into Livonia Public Schools.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank. And Dr. Terrell, again, this is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. New language for JBA, Placement of Students Enrolling into Livonia Public Schools, was added to include grade-level placement for new students, including kindergarten-age students, as well as building principal discretion to place individual students at the most appropriate grade level. This policy has also been reviewed at a study session, committee of the whole, and a previous Board meeting. The Policy Committee recommends approval of the stated changes to Policy JBA.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the adoption of Board Policy JBA, Placement of Students Enrolling into Livonia Public Schools. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. That takes us to Item 8D, Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy JBE, Truancy. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy JBE, Truancy.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Once again, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you very much. New language for Board Policy JBE, Truancy, was added to include the Livonia Public Schools for consistency throughout our board policies. We recommend approval of the stated changes to Board Policy JBE.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Any questions, comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, for the adoption of Board Policy JBAE, Truancy. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to Item 8E, Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy JGCC, Communicable Diseases. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy JGCC, Communicable Diseases.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And once again, we have from Dr. Terrell.
Thank you, President Johnson. New language for Board Policy JGCC, Communicable Diseases, was added to update the name of the agency and reference chart for communicable diseases to the Wayne County Department of Public Health Disease Control Division Communicable Disease Reference Chart. We recommend approval of the stated changes to Board Policy JGCC.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the adoption of Board Policy JGCC, Communicable Diseases. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to Item 8F, Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy JK, Fundraising Activities. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy JK, Fundraising Activities.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton. And, Mr. Willenborg?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. Through a couple of months of review now, we've analyzed how fundraisers provide valuable assistance to our school programs and our students. They also strengthen the cohesion and bond of our school communities. Our new policy recognizes those valuable roles, but acknowledges also that fundraisers can be overly demanding on the students, staff, parents, and our local business community. The new policy shares that contextual framework and calls that all fundraisers have the approval of the Superintendent or designee. The administrative procedures provide additional guidelines and a fence, if you will, to help establish boundaries. I recommend your support of this renamed, rewritten, and enhanced Policy JK, Fundraising Activities.
Thank you, Mr. Willenborg. Questions or comments from the Board? All I can say is we had quite a bit of discussion on this.
It was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
A lot of learning.
Sure was.
We all are.
Lot of excitement.
All right, seeing, seeing all the comments, we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the adoption of Board Policy JK, Fundraising Activities. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. And that now takes us to Item, now we're hearing. Item 8G, Hearing from Board Members. And as has become custom, I will open up to the floor to anyone who has comments this evening. No? 'Twas the night before Christmas, and no one has. Ah, Mrs. Jarvis?
Well, you're stealing my thunder there. I just wanted to wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season. Get well rested, and welcome back in the new year. I remember when my kids were in school, the school year always seems to speed up after the holiday break. So, you know, get yourself all warmed up and ready, because it's going to be fun.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other question, comments from the Board? Well, then I've got a few.
Wow.
It's the end of our year, and unfortunately, we don't say it enough. But I want to thank our Cabinet, our administrators, our teachers, our support staff, our bus drivers, custodians, food service, for everything you do every day of the week for our students. As I said, we don't say it enough, but we do appreciate every one of you and the efforts that you put in, day in and day out, to help our students get the best education and to keep them safe. I appreciate that, thank you. I want to thank my Board colleagues for another wonderful year. Been a lot of work. We all enjoy it. We wouldn't be here if we didn't. Sometimes it gets to be sort of tough, but as you can see from the presentations tonight, what wonderful things have happened over the last six years in this district. Thanks in great part to Plant Maricrossa. Again, we appreciate all you do for us. I think that's, that's all I have. One other thing is, again, one of the main jobs of the Board